We're up and running, okay. Let's call the meeting to order. Any minutes of reports received and filed?
No.
Okay. Liaison reports, upcoming meetings and events?
Coal County Communities Thursday, maybe? I don't know if we have a July meeting, so I don't think we have that. That's about it. Go on without me.
Got BSNA time sheet training tomorrow. Salute to America meeting tomorrow at 10:30. Salute to America Thursday Night Live. Salute to America events Friday and Saturday. I think that's about it.
Wednesday, book signing Coal County at War, new book by Jeremy Amick. The parade is at 6:00 PM on July 3rd. That's all we got. Presentation on 911 upgrades. We're gonna go ahead and let you guys go first.
Can we sit here?
Yeah, let's...
Just take the microphone out.
Is this on? I think so.
Yeah.
You can see I'm alone today, so I'll do my best. Thank you for agreeing to meet with us and hear what we have to say. I brought with me Captain Eric Wildy, who is our Support Services Commander, and was part of the project we're gonna talk about. And then also, I think you all know Bill Betts, who's the IT Director for the city. So, we're here to talk about the 911 telephones and the fact that we knew that we were gonna have to replace them at some point in time, and that time has arrived. And we, I think last, when we had a state-of-the-art 911 center, that was about 2002 or 2003, we think 12 or 13 years ago. And so we think we did pretty well ringing as much as we possibly could from all those pieces of equipment that we put in that center. But they no longer make the parts to the phone system that we have now. And so we've done quite a bit of work. And I hope that you have the information that Captain Wildy put together. In it, you'll see a history of the project, beginning about six months ago. And if you look at, I think, page two or three, you'll see who comprised that committee. It was an IT member and three of our supervisors. And I think the process was very thorough. Certainly, if you have any questions, we'll answer them. But in the end, to make this brief, since you have that information, and Sam suggested that we make it brief, I think, that we are asking respectfully and humbly the county to assist us in purchasing that radios or telephone system. The total amount is $297,488. And so 25%, which is the same rate, and how we arrived at that is the county contributes 25% to our annual operating expenses. And so we applied that same 25% and are asking for help in the amount of $74,000. I think it's 74,372. And then I think there was also a question, because we had mentioned there was a three-pronged... three components to this upgrade. The second and third are both our radio upgrades and our recording system upgrades. And there was an interest, well, if we come back for assistance on the next two, how much would that be? And we wanted to estimate on the high end. And the high end is $160,000 total for both of those. So we feel comfortable in saying we don't think there's any way that we would ask for an additional 40... more than additional $40,000. So we are... three are here to try to answer your questions. I am not a techno guy, so that's why these two guys are here. So we'd be happy to answer questions.
That was really the only question that I had, Roger, was what was Phase Two and Three gonna cost? And so roughly, $160,000, so...
Yes, sir.
It's pretty straightforward. Sounds like it's something that we need to do.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, I didn't need anything. I talked to Mr. Crowell about it prior and went over any questions I had, except for the cost for Phase Two and Three, so... When do we have to do this? This year or next year?
Well, because they don't make parts anymore, we'd like to do it as soon as possible. We... that means this summer, if we could. Now, I don't know if that affects your assistance in any way as far as when we would need that. That's why, besides being the IT Director, I could refer to the Finance Director, who happens to be with us today. And I'll let him answer that.
Be nice, Bill.
Always nice. I think, you know, if it's something that the county could do now, that would be... that'd be great. That'd be helpful to the city. Obviously, if it's something... I know you're in your middle of your budget year right now. And so if it's something that maybe needs to be planned in the future, we could probably do some kind of an agreement that just says that, based on next year's budget, the county would then contribute to the project. But I think from our standpoint at the city, from a technical standpoint, we really wanna move forward with the project and get it done this summer. We have things in place, because it is the 911 system to kinda hold us over if something does go wrong. But we don't wanna... we'd rather have full support, have a system that's got maintenance on it and those types of things, and not have it be something we're just kinda band-aiding together, so... So it'd be up to the commission on how you'd wanna proceed there, so...
Yes, we just need to see if we have it in the budget this year, if we can take it out of contingency. Where do we take 911 out of, anyway?
Some of it comes out of emergency services.
What's the matter, John?
Take it out of my budget.
I think that's something we just decide. I mean, I think we can take it out of emergency services, sales tax, or take it out of GR.
Yeah, I think we probably ought to just go ahead and move ahead.
Well, we can sign an agreement saying we're gonna pay for that part of it. We just need to figure out when we're gonna do it, and if we need to put it in next year's budget, or if we need to figure out where to get it from this year. So I guess that's just technicalities there, so I'm good with it. And I think that's what we're hearing up here, is we're all fine with it.
So you guys have an agreement that we need to sign, or...
We can put one together. I'm certain Drew will be happy to send something this way, so...
Or let us know when you want to pull the trigger, and when you'd like to have the money, or when this is gonna be completed.
Right. We can do that. We'll put an agreement together and just inform you of kind of what our project timeline looks like. I think we're planning to go to the council on Monday, this next Monday, to the mayor and the council, and get approval to move forward with the project there as well. So the city has it. We kinda had it in our capital improvement budget for several years, just hadn't gotten to this point. So we're kinda there, so...
All right.
All right.
Good deal.
Sounds good, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. One of those good city-county cooperative projects.
That's right.
There's some hiccups, that's all. It's family.
Multifunctional printer consolidation vendor presentation.
That's a mouthful, isn't it?
Yeah.
We're gonna need another cup of coffee.
You might. So a few weeks ago, I had forwarded to you guys a summary of the responses we got for this consolidation we've been looking at for some time. I also include in that email just sort of an explanation of how I arrived at those numbers. And that said, we've invited the businesses that responded this morning to kinda do brief presentations to you, just to talk about their capabilities and what sets them apart from the competition. It'll go in this order, RICO, KOPI, and then Datacom. And with that said... Mitch?
Is this the 2015-1-02 printer multifunctional equipment pricing summary? And there's the detail tab. What'd you say, they each got two and a half minutes?
Well, if we could keep it around 10 minutes at the max, yeah.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah.
We don't have any...
We got a long agenda, yeah. Either that, or somebody gets to buy lunch, I don't know.
Short and sweet and to the point. I wanna thank you guys for your time this morning. I'm gonna introduce myself. I'm Mitch Roddeman. I'm the Central Missouri Sales Manager for RICO USA. This is Matt McNally. He's the Account Executive for Coal County. And this is Bobby Anderson. He's the Central Missouri Service Manager. So I got a little bit of information in front of you there. The main thing, if you could, just follow with me. I'm just gonna give you the highlights on each page, okay? Versus PowerPoint you to death, or reading it to you. The first page there is, who is RICO? We are a worldwide company. Our slogan is a global reach with a local touch. We were founded in 1936. We're a Fortune 500 company. And we are ISO 9001 Quality Management Certified. On the next page there, we are what is considered the central region of US, RICO US. We are proud partners with the Kansas City Chiefs. We have 747 sales reps in this region and 1,100 service technicians, as well as 200-plus IT resources in the area. On your next page there is an overview of our pricing structure. What we used was called the WISCA contract to base our price on. WISCA stands for the Western States Contracting Alliance. And just to give you a brief overview of what that is, the state of Missouri elected to go with the WISCA contract for their state contract versus going out to bid every few years. They found that the cost of going out to bid was costing the state a lot of money. So they've piggybacked off of this contract. And if you see the next page there, all of the highlighted states are all the states that use this as their purchasing contract for MFPs, for multifunction products. The next couple of pages there are a brief overview of what the WISCA contract is and what it entails. The important thing I want you to take away from these two pages here is why choose this contract? This contract uses more than just pricing structure. It also talks about service plans. The service plan with WISCA is locked in for five years from the date that you all sign on a piece of equipment, whether it be purchasing or leasing it outright, meaning that you will not see annual increases on your service contract. With that, staples are also included in those service contracts. It's not a huge expense, but at the same point, again, when you sign from day one, it'll be the same price every year after that for five years. You scroll through two pages there. Every piece of equipment that we bid also has what is called a power filter on it. The power filter helps with power surges. It helps with lightning strikes. It's also another level of insurance. So if one of your pieces of equipment, let's say the NX gets struck by lightning and blows up a couple pieces of equipment, rather than you're all's insurance being responsible for it, the insurance of the power filter company will help assist in that. It also assists in reducing the amount of service calls on the equipment as well. The next two pages there, we're gonna show you what the power filters are. For the standard MFP, the walk-up units, the floor models, this is the top one, the next-gen PCS. And then the one below that is the desktop solution for all the printers and desktop MFPs that we have bid. The production power filter, none of the equipment that we bid was production. So on the next page there, the current environment. So what you have right now, you've got nine MFPs or multifunction products that are outside of the RICO family, okay? All nine of them are either old enough or late enough into their leases that we can replace them immediately with RICO products and begin a cost savings for the county, starting today. You also have nine pieces of equipment that are Lanier and Savin units. Those are part of the RICO family. To put it bluntly, it would be like a Chevy and a GNC, okay? Same piece of equipment, just a different logo. We can take over service on those pieces of equipment, lower your rate of cost per copy on the service, and be able to blanket everything underneath one service contract. You also have 60 HP printers approximately countywide. We are a preferred vendor of HP, having a national company. We are a national partner of theirs. We have access to supplies and toner and parts, so we can cut your costs on those units as well, starting the moment you decide to go business... do business with us. You also have approximately 13 printers by Lexmark, Xerox, or Dell. Looking at those models, we can give you replacement RICO units at no cost, other than the service cost, to be able to start saving you money on those as well. The next page is why do business with RICO? Any copier company or multifunction product company, the service department is the backbone of the company, okay? We have 33 certified service technicians that can assist Coal County should you decide to do business with us. The average tenure of each one of those is 23 years. And again, we are ISO 9001 certified. And the last piece on this one, you know, again, the global reach with a local touch. We are a global company. We do have a regional office in St. Louis that has over 500 employees. And here in Coal County alone, we have 37 residents of Coal County that work for RICO. So we are local. The last bit here is every piece of security that RICO has to offer. If you could, just turn to page six. This is the one I wanted to cover today. Destroy latent data. Our data overwrite security system, what it does is it keeps the equi... excuse me, the information... it overwrites it. So what that's gonna do is gonna keep your all secure information, whether it be social security numbers, addresses, things of that nature, from getting into the wrong hands. When equipment is sent back to leasing companies or to warehouses that are wholesale, sometimes that equipment hangs on to information on there. And that information has been known to get into the wrong hands before for identity fraud, things of that nature. Our equipment comes with this security measure, so that you will not have to worry about the county's sensitive information getting into the wrong hands once the equipment is upgraded. Do you all have any questions for us?
I don't think I have any at this time. I mean, we may have some at a later date, but I appreciate the presentation.
I have any right now.
Can I ask one question? On printers, what is your life expectancy on what we're using?
On the RICO printers?
Well, HP primarily. I mean, that's what we're using. Yeah, they had a committed amount of life with RICO Lanier stuff, so... Well, that's why we got HP, which seems to be very reliable.
Sure. Bobby, would you...
Yeah, we guarantee parts and service for seven years. Okay. And we'll keep it running even if we can get the parts after that. Okay.
We also have access to a Consumer Digest site. It's called buyer's laboratory. We can get a side-by-side comparison for you, so you can see directly right there.
Like I said, we've had some experience with a lot of different flavors and stuff.
Sure, sure. And we do have access to HPs. If you all decided, hey, you know what? We wanna stick with HPs on printers, yeah, we can talk about a negotiating contract on those.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all. We'll go ahead and excuse ourselves a little.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jen knows how to get ahold of y'all?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, man.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning, Sher.
I'm here all by myself. I have anybody with me. And I'd like to thank Mitch, because he did a great job there. And we are a Lanier dealer, so it is the same product that we bid. Same machines, different tag on the front. All made by the same manufacturer. For those of you who don't know me that are here, I think you all do, but my name is Sherry Wilbers. I'm with KOPI. We are a local company who has been in Coal County for 41 years. We've been an authorized dealer of Lanier since 1992. Our offices are located here, which means that all of our tax money stays here. I'm a big proponent of keeping all of our tax money local. When you call our offices for sales, for product, you need supplies delivered, you need service, you talk to a local person, we don't put you through an automated system where you're talking to someone in another city or in another state. And that person lives, works, and shops here in Jefferson City and in Coal County. Since we are local, all of your supply deliveries are made locally. I do know that some of our competitors, the supplies are shipped from out of state and out of other warehouses. We make deliveries every day in town from our local office. When you call in for service, you get someone local. We have, along with the manufacturer's warranties that are provided, KOPI actually provides an eight-year total satisfaction guarantee. What that means is, as long as your equipment is covered by a maintenance contract, which was bid on this bid, if for some reason we cannot repair the machine in the next eight years, we will replace it for you at no cost. KOPI has a website. It's available 24/7. That means you can place supply orders and you can place service requests via our website after hours, on weekends, whenever if you'd be in the office working on the weekend and the machine would go down. That way, we would have it first thing Monday morning. In addition, I also prepared a sample catalog, which I gave Jennifer, that we would provide to all of the county offices. It would be a simplistic look at what we have bid. If you're not in this business, it can get confusing. We would give that to everyone. And then we would send a specialist in to talk with each department at your request. We won't just be sending salespeople to all the departments to try to upgrade all of their equipment. I think that that needs to be done as the county requests it. And then we can individualize the machine for each department's needs. Not everybody... It's not cookie cutter in this business. There's a lot of options available. And I think each department needs to buy exactly what they need, not overbuy, not overspend the county's monies. So as your jobs, stewards of the county's monies, it's a tough one. So we think we are a great consultant, and we can help you along with this process. I have had 32 years' experience in this industry. No comment. So I made some...
You started when you were five years old, right?
I like you. So I made some key points. Call them from an old timer in looking at the bid and the process and what's going on. Some things that I think you need to take into consideration. Not all of the equipment on this bid is in current production. This is something you need to know. Also, some models that have been bid on here, originally were introduced into the marketplace three to five years ago. If you're gonna put out a bid for new equipment, I really believe it should be new. Technology changes rapidly in this industry, as you know. Talk to your IT department, ask them about that. So if you're putting in something that is old technology to start with, what's gonna happen in three years or five years if you've got it on a lease? It's not gonna maybe work with your new computer systems. Something that you need to be aware of and to know about. And if you have any questions on age of equipment or anything like that, I can talk to you about that individually or provide you with that information that we can print out for you. Point number two. I bid some alternate bids, and they are on the sheets that Jennifer provided. Some of those actually fit the specs. The thing about it is, when you buy equipment, you may need 11x17, another department may not. We can get you a much faster machine at a lower cost if you don't need that size paper. So again, it's not a cookie cutter business, and we need to get what's best for each department. And that's what we've been doing in the past on the cooperative procurement pricing. I have guaranteed through the manufacturer special pricing from Lanier that is available on the entire line of equipment that Lanier sells. So I can give that special pricing to any piece of equipment that's even not on this bid, okay? Point number three. The bid specs that you're looking at, the summary sheet that you're looking at, take into consideration all options on the machines. And not every department's gonna need every option. So when you're looking at your budget numbers and you're looking at all of those, please remember that it may not be that high. They may only need one paper tray and a cabinet, whereas in this summary sheet, a finisher, a stapler, a three-hole punch, a large-capacity tray are all added into the numbers you're looking at. So that's gonna be a little difficult for you to make a decision on what you're looking at. I think maybe some of that needs to be discussed. Point number five. This was not a formal RFP. I believe your best effort is to continue purchasing the way you are right now until you get a really good handle on the models of machines that you have, how many you have in the county, what the volumes are, all the costs that you currently have. When we started this process last September, not a lot was known. Purchasing department did a great job putting the bid together. But as you saw in the email that you received, there was a lot of guesswork involved in it. And I think really you need to get all of your ducks in a row before you make a commitment or decision. These are just things that I've read into the bid and I think you need to consider. I would say to two of our commissioners here, would you first cut a board without measuring what you needed? Or to Commissioner Bushman, would you let me say I called you and said, I need five Texas for five average-sized men? Average men or average volumes? Kind of all weighs out the same. Those... These are things that I think you really need to take into consideration when you're looking at this bid and the numbers. These are big numbers to spend for the county. This is probably not in my best interest to mention this, but nothing says that you also have to award this to a single vendor. You can break it apart. You can break it into categories, segments, printers, and multifunctional units, whatever you want to do. So that would be something that I would urge you to consider. Right now, KOPI has several pieces of equipment in the county, and I thank you for that business. We appreciate it, and we look forward to doing business with you in the future. You have any questions?
I don't think so. Thank you, Sher.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I do have PowerPoint, but I promise I'll keep it short. I won't bore everyone, just a little bit.
Hey, Melissa, you put the...
There's the turn on there, and there's the...
Sorry.
Steve, y'all might wanna...
There's the turns off that remote right there. Like I said, I'm not gonna use it.
What's supposed to work? We've been talking about that for two years.
Well, as soon as you say it doesn't work, it does.
Well, I mean, I think I've brought this up every time it doesn't work. I get to have my little fix, and we need to call them and tell them to come back and fix it, or whatever. We just got that.
Can you guys see? Yeah. There's a...
Okay. Unless Josie needs it?
Oh, yeah, you can... Well, thank you all. I'm Josie Wester. I'm the major council manager with Datacom. Jake Robertson is our local account manager for the Jefferson City area. So together, we work on Coal County. Just wanna go through some of the key... Oh, sorry. Did you say keep my voice down?
Resolution. Josie, you're way too loud.
No, trying to get...
I don't know how to do that on your laptop, but do you know? Change the resolution, I'm sorry.
Oh. And if it won't, that's fine, too. No, you're good.
Stop yelling at us.
Where's your desk?
Okay, well, I won't hold everyone up while they're working on that. So some of the things about Datacom are my thing. Y'all want me to start or go?
You can go ahead.
Yeah.
Okay. So we do Canon, Konca Minolta, and Lexmark. So in my opinion, you always have, you know, the top-tier manufacturers. And between those, any product's gonna be good. And what it comes down to is the service side of it. So when I... I was a major council manager for six years at Cannes Fourth largest dealership in Dallas. And when I was looking to move back to my hometown, my biggest thing was going to a good service company, which is why the president there put me in touch with Joe Burke good service company, which is why the president there put me in touch with Joe Burke and Ryan Burke here and said that, you know, they have great service, great people, and good products. And that's exactly what I wanted. I've been here three years now. I love the company and that's, service is our number-one thing. So, that's really what we stand behind. So, why Datacom? We've been in business in Jefferson City, as you guys probably know, for over 43 years. We're located just right down the road on Metro Drive. This is our corporate office, but then, we do also have six other locations throughout Missouri. So, definitely got the scope. We have over 25 local technicians. And then, and we take a unified approach to technology. So, not just from your copiers to your printers, but also looking at your network or any solutions that we can provide, cost-tracking capabilities that we'll add on. So, that's one of the big things we do in any of our major account environments, go through and see how we can advance what you're currently doing to make it better and not just do a life-for-life investment on it. Being locally based, when you call in, you don't have 1-800 numbers, which is very nice. So, we have local dispatching. And, yes, we have local dispatching. And then, our warehouse here in Jefferson City, we also house over a million dollars in parts. What that means for you guys is that when a machine goes down or needs any service, our techs will be able to be on-site with that part. They carry all the major car components in their vehicles, but outside of that, if they don't have it for any reason, we'll have it hot-shotted to them while they're on-site. So, that way, we're not having them leave, go get a part, or leave, say we have to order in three days and then come back. They're able to fix it on the spot.
Am I caught up to you now?
Yep, you are.
Thanks, Ed.
Okay, so, over 25 local technicians here. Each one's factory-trained, which that's a big deal. So, when you go to have technicians go to the factory and get trained, instead of having someone come back and train the technicians themselves, there's always such a loss and gap of what someone learns and if they're certified on the device. So, anytime a technician comes to work on any machine, they're going to be certified on it, otherwise, we will not dispatch them to your place. Guaranteed service response time. We do a guaranteed four-hour response time and our average response time is less than two hours. I always tell customers, though, if it's urgent and you need us there quicker than two hours, just let us know when you call in. It is, again, a live dispatch, so we're, we try to send everyone out as prompt as we can. If it's something you need us urgently for, our techs will stay after hours and make sure it gets up and running before they leave. Automatic meter read and tracking, this is a really nice system because we're actually able to monitor your machines remotely. So, a lot of times, before a customer even knows that they have an issue with their copier, our service technicians are calling them saying, "We've got an error code, do you need us to dispatch someone?" What that means is your uptime is much higher with that. And then, we're also monitoring it for your usages and then also tracking your toners so we can ship that without you having to call in for it. So, we really try to take everything on the copier side off of the customer and put it on us. The billing and the contracts, this I really like about our company, too, that we'll customize your billing. So, basically, at the beginning of anything, we sit down, go through exactly how you want your bill laid out. And then, if you want it customized, if the department wants something different on their shipping labels, et cetera, we'll do that. And then, we do no return shipping costs if you guys were to do leases on the machines. And then, also, no long-term service contracts. So, if you do do service contracts, it's 30-day cancelable or adjustable. So, that way, we always make sure we have the right volumes for what you're doing at that time. And then, again, a fixed five-year cost per copy. So, the price that's on the bid is the price it will be for the next five years. It's not going to increase in any way. And going a little bit more into that, I put together, based on that B L I report that Jennifer provided, I know you guys have been kind of back and forth on if service contracts are necessary or maybe going and not doing service contracts, but just purchasing toners. So, I put this together, just to give you a little comparison, based on the B L I pricing is the third row there, where you see the cost per page based on purchasing toners. And that's based on the yield and then the cost that was published on B L I. And then, I did your monthly cost based on the 43 printers. I said this on one segment, the category two ones. And gave you a comparison of the service agreement, cost per page on the bid for each of the three vendors that are here today. So, you can see the difference between, I mean, for almost everyone, that you save so much money by doing a service contract on that part of it. Installation training process, one of our big things with any new customer or any new department, sitting down, kind of going through what they want us to do for the training, how they want to do the installation. So, we'll sit down, go through a schedule like this with each department to make sure we tailor it to whatever best fits our needs. Corely account reviews, again, is a time for us to be able to go back through and just, you know, revisit your usages, make sure we've got the right fit and make any modifications that we need to. Secure print, wireless print, department IDs, these are all ways for cutting down costs for you guys by being able to do your department IDs. It really helps hold people accountable for what they're doing. So, we work with each department to see, do you want department IDs? Do you want any allocations for who can print color, who can print how much? We can set that up for them. And the hard drive wiping and hard drive removal, on your current machines, any of them that you want us to, we'll either wipe them for free or remove your hard drives for free. And then, on any of the new ones at the end of the term, we'll wipe those as well. And then, here's some additional solutions that we also offer, cost-tracking solutions. Uniflow's a big one that I do in a lot of different universities or counties or cities where each department can do some cost-tracking for it. So, it's automatically generated every month and someone's not having to type up in sales spreadsheet. It's a really inexpensive solution that we'd love to talk with people more about. And then, the rest are just some other services that we offer, including the managed network, brokerage, managed print services program. I know you guys recently sent out something for the toners, but that's something we'd love to talk about further with the county, trying to look at doing all that together. Overview on everything and questions for me?
Just a lot of information and so...
Sorry.
No, you're fine.
And I'll send Jennifer a copy of all this so you guys have it.
What's your primary equipment source?
Canon. We do Canon, Konica, Minolta, and Lexmark, but Canon's the primary.
Okay, so printers, though, would be Lexmark?
Lexmark, yeah. Yeah, I really like Lexmark for the desktop printer segment. I think that they even make a great machine for that.
I don't have any questions at this time, so maybe, maybe at some point, so.
Okay. Thank you.
One more?
No, I think so.
G F I is not coming in?
No.
Okay.
Hi, Jen, so I got a question for you. I mean, I was just looking over the bid and stuff. So, was the service contract included in the price or...
The cost per copy, that's not there, is included, yes.
So, the cost per copy is the service contract?
Yes. You thought it was what? The cost for copy is the service contract, correct?
It is, but those are also based on the average volumes that you took that are not actual volumes.
Right.
Sherri made a couple of points about the items that we bid. Some are longer in production, some are three to five years old.
I couldn't speak to that.
So, that in your lap, Dale, since you're more familiar with that?
Well, the biggest problem, the deal on the standalone unit, depending on how the department's going to use it, if they're going to truly use it as a printer as well as a copier, scanner, whatever they're going to do it with, then we run into the issue, is it going to be compatible with the next version of Windows? And we run into a lot of things where old technology, it doesn't support it, you can't use it, you got to replace it. So, that would be the biggest thing. And I'm not saying that might happen again for another 15 years, I don't know. But if you just got a copier or scanner, whatever, then that's pretty impervious to technology changes. But printers are, you got to, if the PC doesn't print to it, it's not going to work. I mean, that's just kind of the bottom line. And everybody's kind of, you know, you're at the mercy of whatever happens with Microsoft in that case. But the deal is you don't want to buy old technology if you can avoid it. I mean, that's like anything else, you want to buy the latest and greatest if you can. I mean, you're spending the money, buy the new stuff. So, that would, that would be the take on that. But the, every, and I, you made a good point, but every department has its own requirements. I mean, what, you know, Mary might do out of health is totally different maybe than what Steve's doing over at the clerk's office, you know, as far as what their requirements are on their, on their machines. So, you don't want to go, you know, one size is going to fit everybody. And Chris's office over here, he's got a printer with four drawers in it. I don't even know if some of these printers support four drawers. I know they, we buy Lexmark because it does and we, but we just bought that, it's not very old. So, those are the things that kind of bother me. We've replaced a lot of printers in the last two or three years. So, they should still have several years left in life, you know, that we don't have to replace them. It's not uncommon for us to have a 10-year-old printer. But, but like I said, those don't really get supported anymore with the operating system. But I've got one down in my office, it's 1999. And it still works. So, it's, it's, those, I don't like just do a wholesale change just to do it.
Then you said that, well, Sherri mentioned, we don't have to award all of it, we can do a cookie cutter deal, pick and choose, correct? That's the way the RFP was written?
Yeah, it was an informal bid, so this is off cooperative procurement.
Gotcha.
These are just the prices that they're able to offer. So, yeah, I mean, we can, you can do whatever you see fit.
Kind of do it in stages is...
I think it was brought up to try to get everything on the same cycle. I think that's what the intent was, wasn't it, Chris? I think you kind of brought it up to see if we could save some money that way.
Right, well, I'm just looking at all these service contracts and stuff that we have, too. And so, you know, I'm not saying the service contracts aren't, aren't there for a reason, but sometimes, you know, sometimes as a consumer, you buy a service contract and sometimes you don't. Sometimes you take that gamble, so anyway.
Well, so, Mark was a big opponent of service contracts for printers. So, I don't know how many years it's been, four, about four years ago, he basically, we just stopped him and, and, you know, his deal, he just thought it was spending money. He just thought it'd be cheaper by the printer, which I didn't agree with, but, you know, we haven't been really bitten by it, you know? But same time, we were paying Altrea, like, I don't know what it was, $100 a year or something per printer. And we had the response time and they'd come and fix anything we wanted. That wasn't a, that wasn't a toner replacement or anything. That was physically, there's a defect on the printer and it needs to be fixed. It wasn't a supply contract, it was strictly maintenance. So, we have not had any printer maintenance. Outside of when we buy from Worldwide Tech, we get three-year maintenance on the, on the equipment. And that's it. I mean, we buy that and we don't buy anything unless it's some exceptional reason and the department puts the extra dollars.
You know you're going to jinx this.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, I'll go out and everything's broken, but, but that's kind of where we're at. I mean, but I don't get involved with the multi-function thing because every department's doing their own thing. So, I don't know service-wise if they're doing, you know, some kind of monthly fee and, you know, or pre-coffee fee. I don't know how all those are lined up.
Well, I mean, as someone that, that looks through the bills thoroughly, I mean, we got leases in places, we got purchases in places, we got maintenance contracts and, you know. In general, I don't like maintenance contracts either. I mean, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't buy a maintenance contract on my vehicle. If it breaks, I fix it, I pay for it. But, you know, I realize that some of those things are important. And so, anyway, but...
I mean, if you go into a situation like this and it's part of the, you know, part of the overall scheme where you're buying paper, toner, and everything else, you know, it's kind of an all-encompassing deal. You know, I haven't really been part of one of those, so I don't know how it works out. But, you know, it's obviously, it's going to cost some money, but at the same time, it's kind of not your worry anymore. You make the phone call and somebody else takes care of it. So, that's, you know, for me, that's a great thing, but I don't really, I don't go fix printers because I don't have parts, you know? Still have to either replace the printer or get it, call somebody who can fix it.
Right. I mean, I'm not saying that we're going to do anything, but I think this was just something to at least look at and see if it could save the county some money. And, you know, if we do a more unified approach, maybe it saves us more money on a maintenance contract, you know, by having more machines under one vendor.
I mean, it helps to standardize because every time we have a different unit, it's handled differently. We have, like Marilyn's got a Lexmark multi-function copier printer, whatever. It is totally different than a Canon, it's totally different than a Lanier on how you put this, you know, how you go out and put the people in there and do scanning and all of it. It's a totally different beast and you have to have somebody come out and, when they were having somebody do it, and they, he told me how to do it. So, now that I know how, it's not a big deal, but it's not like any, anything else. It's just totally unique. So, from my perspective, it makes it easier if everything was the same, but that's not going to necessarily solve everybody's problem on their end.
Okay. It's just something that we need to dig into a little bit more and maybe have another meeting to, for us to go over some of this stuff and then get with you all to maybe look at some things further.
One thing I did see on one of the reports was they had the age of printers and stuff. And I haven't been here that long, but I think I've replaced about every printer here. And they had some printers there that the age was, the average age was like 10. Well, that can't be the case because I, you know, they've all been replaced in the last few years. So, I, I think that needs to be kind of relooked at a little bit. I think we're maybe overestimating the age of our equipment and stuff like that, too. So, I would like to just, you know, if we're going to go forward, just to be sure we know what we're, what we really have and, you know, what we're doing with it.
We should be able to pull that up with our asset list, shouldn't we?
I would think so, yeah.
Know exactly what we got.
I mean, every, I mean, every asset's got a tag on it, says what year you got it. So, I mean, it's, that's about the easiest way I know how to do it. You know, without having to really do a lot of work, just go and say, "What's your tag number on the printer?" And say, "Oh, okay, it's 2010." Well, it's five years old.
If the printer was less than $500, it won't have a tag.
I think we probably got tags on despite, I think it, it's still fixed assets.
Okay, what kind of sheriff's department has lots of printers that has no tags, but that's less than $500?
Right now, the rule is $500. We only tag within a year.
It didn't come through me, I don't think, then.
So, anything under five has a generic tag that only has four digits.
So, I think we need to change the rule for the sheriff's department.
Is that you guys' mindset for that?
It's going to go the wrong way.
Okay, well, we got lots to think about.
Have we got anything else?
I don't remember seeing any printers on here that were under $500, so, so, I don't even know if those pertain to what y'all have. These are all 1,400.
Actually, all the HP lasers, black and white lasers are under $500. Not by much, but they are under $500.
Let's move on.
Yeah. We got anything else? We got a full agenda here.
All right. Sherri, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome to stay if you want, but I wouldn't.
And I forgot to introduce our mayor, who's also left, but we do have Tammy Bestian here from Historic City of Jefferson also. Visiting contracts, reapproval of contract for 2015 asphalt overlay, Mr. Eric.
This is just, we made, I had an error on the...
Okay, I missed that, John.
I had an error on the contract amount. Jefferson Asphalt brought it to our attention. It's actually less than what y'all signed last month.
Yes.
We like that.
And since they hadn't signed it and we're not anywhere close to starting the project, we just talked to Jill and she recommended just doing a new contract. We could have underrun that one, but she recommended just doing a new contract.
I noticed we ended on the agenda before the boom, more.
So, would you include your commission on that or what?
Yeah.
Good old honest engine, so.
We came in a little under with this new dollar amount. So, recommend approval of this, this new contract in the amount of $504,296.82.
I move we approve the 2015 asphalt overlay contract.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Signing a public health emergency preparedness contract.
That's that one Woodward that I found.
It's over here. That's fine. Okay. You two, two signatures?
Yeah.
This was a grant.
It's from the state.
So, I move we sign the public health emergency preparedness contract from DHSS.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are rolling.
Right. Betsy, you're up. Deputy Sheriff's Salary Supplement.
We are awarded the grant for the DSSF funds. They approve anybody that makes between twenty-nine and thirty-five thousand. If you make over thirty-five thousand, you are not eligible this year.
I move we sign the fifteen sixteen Deputy Sheriff's Salary Supplement Fund.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. We'll keep you signing. Approval of the appraisal contract. Sorry, I'm, I'm moving this along.
You go right ahead.
We've been contacted by the tax rep for Menards. They appealed most years in the past and we need to get a full appraisal done on this property. And we have a very short time period to get it done in. So, we've contracted with Wright Appraisals out of Columbia. We checked local, everybody local was too busy. They didn't have time to get it done. So, this is who we got.
So, is this, what, what property is this on?
Menards.
Oh, okay. All right. Okay. So, how much is it for?
Thirty-seven fifty.
Three thousand?
It's a full appraisal. It's...
Okay. Three thousand seven hundred and fifty?
Yeah.
You guys wanna see this?
Two copies of the original.
So, I move that we sign the contract with Wright Appraisals for appraisal services.
I'm gonna second it. So, they're gonna have, there's, there's appraisal due. We have appraisal due. And then do we let them two fight it out or do we gotta still go to BOE?
Usually when Menards has appealed, they haven't showed up to BOE. You know, you don't have...
They go straight?
You appeal to BOE, but you don't have to show up. The value you should tell over and go to the tax commission.
So, what if we don't get an appraisal done on it? We just uphold the value and...
We're still gonna have to have one when we get to tax commission level.
Okay. All right. I was just trying to remember how they, well, we haven't done Menards though before down there.
I don't remember doing them, but...
Or did they go just straight to the tax commission?
Most of the time, they go straight to the tax commission.
All right. That's why we don't remember talking about it then probably. Okay.
I can tell you stories and stories about tax reps, but I wouldn't do that. I got two originals. That way you all can have an original copy and you can get one of the originals back to me that I can send back to the vendor.
Okay. Got a motion? You second?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you, Chris.
Good luck with it.
Okay. Fifteen, two thousand and fifteen twenty-two courtroom mics, TVs, and speakers.
My understanding, the funds have been transferred. So, this is the contract with the entertainer to receive the installation.
What, what was all this for?
For the courtroom. Remember the TV and speaker and microphone system?
Over in the, in the court?
Judge choices.
Well... When did we do that?
We did it a couple of weeks ago. Uh, the funding was being provided by...
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
It's not on.
Not you.
Okay. So, we just need to approve the contract? Did Jill see it?
Yes.
Okay.
So, who's it with?
Entertainer.
Okay. So, I move that we approve the, approve and sign the contract with the entertainer for the courtroom mics, TVs, and speakers.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hey, guys, we're just moving right along. Twenty fifteen twenty-six linens and laundering services.
Okay. So, this is for the EMS laundering services. We only got one bid back this year from Clean. Um, a few we've been using for the last three years. I did put the bids from two thousand and twelve on there just so you guys could have kind of a basis for comparison. Um, as you can see, Clean is a lot lower. And then over six years, they're only having less than a three percent increase. I remember our past provider, we had invoices singly coming in at six, seven thousand dollars. And our spend last year with them was eleven, six eighty-five. So, might correct me if I'm wrong, but very happy with them. And the recommendation is to continue with Clean.
Absolutely.
So, I don't have a problem with this, but I just question Mike, um, I mean, how, how much of the linens and laundering are we doing in-house? I mean, I know we have the facilities there, but...
As far as any investigation, none.
Okay. So, this is mainly patient stuff?
Oh, yeah. Yes.
Okay. So, we're doing all our own stuff in-house, but this is all patient stuff? Okay. Great. So, I move we approve and award and sign the contract with Clean for linen and laundering services.
You probably just wanna award it.
We don't have a contract?
No.
Okay. So, I'll amend my motion and I move that we award the contract to Clean for linen and laundry services.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Twenty fifteen dash twenty-seven Sheriff's Department Fleet Maintenance and Repair.
Okay. So, we received three bids for this service. Um, Rollins Automotive was the low bid and that is the recommendation. You can see the numbers for yourself.
As I look at these, I mean, Braun had eleven dollars plus parts. So, what is on oil changes? I mean, just...
Yeah, I'm not sure. That's how it was bid. And then, I mean, in my eyes, Rollins is the clear low bid. So, I didn't really pursue that further. But, I know what you're saying and I, I wasn't sure myself.
Another thing I was concerned with was the forty percent markup on the parts for Rollins Automotive. And I called him and asked him and, uh, he said that was a mistake. So, we can get that from him in writing or whatever. It'll be ten percent. But, I didn't know if you wanted that. We can get that in writing from him if you want to before we start.
We were just gonna put that on the contract and then...
Sorry, you'll put ten percent on the contract?
But, it should be awarded based on how they were submitted.
Jennifer talked to me about it and I said, "You can't go back and amend your bid."
Okay.
And in this case, it's moved anyway because Rollins is way lower. So, what we do, and we, this happened before with the contract where they made a mistake. It is, or rather a bid, do we do the actual contract? The contract will reflect the corrected amount. But, you have to consider what was submitted to it.
But, it's lower than the bid amount. So, it's in our favor. So, I move we award the Sheriff's Department Fleet Vehicle Maintenance to Rollins Automotive.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Twenty fifteen dash twenty-eight natural gas.
Okay. So, the theme of the day apparently is one bid. I expected three from this. At the end of the day, we got one. To be honest with you, this is kind of Greek to me. I have it in front of you, uh, what we've been paying in red. And then, um, the two options that were offered this year from the same company, from Constellation. I don't know. Chris, do you kind of have more of a grasp on this than I do?
I, I do, yeah.
I remember that from the last bid.
I do somewhat. Um, so, I'm always frustrated when we only get one bid. But, so, the, that's what I wasn't sure of. The part in red was our current price?
Two thousand and thirteen pricing. It's at the top. So, the two thousand and thirteen is in red. And then the two thousand and fifteen that was offered is in the blue. And then the purple is this year. It's the alternate pricing.
And which one were they recommending that we go with?
They were recommending, uh, the purple. And that's outlined why on the second page. In their opinion, this alternate pricing is the most beneficial option for Cole County. The facility would have a hundred percent tolerance and pay the same contract price for all volumes consumed. It eliminates the risk and exposure to market volatility and therefore the need for over and under normal nominal pricing. Good lord. Got that out.
So, Jeff was here. I don't know that he really understood all of this when we went this route. And Sam, I know you weren't here, but, uh, so anyway, this was an opportunity for us to buy direct from the gas suppliers, basically, and to, we still pay a transportation fee to Ameren to transport the gas, but the savings was substantial. And, uh, we have to have metering and stuff on all the, the gas meters. But, uh, it was, I don't know. Countywide, I think it was fourteen thousand dollars a year that we saved roughly. Um, of course, we had to do some, some things to get that, to get those savings there, but, um... Now, how, how quickly do we need to move on this?
I was told that, um, because we've already done everything we need to do with Ameren from the previous contract. The term's what, November first. So, we have a little bit of, of time and I'll confirm that, but I think we have some time.
Okay.
So, I guess, how, how are we doing it now? We were buying a fixed amount each?
The way we're doing it now, yeah, it is in red. And I'm not sure if you guys ever locked anything in. I don't know. My involvement kind of ended at the award.
So, how we did that originally is, and so it gets kind of confusing. So, you kind of look at previous year's numbers based on monthly volume of usage. And so, you have to kind of give them an amount. So, say, I mean, I'm just gonna throw out numbers because I don't know what they are. But, so say we're gonna buy five thousand decatherm's and that's what this DTH is. It's a decotherm or a unit of, of energy, um, unit of gas, however you wanna call it. But, we had to give them how much we were gonna use. And so, when we say we're gonna, we're gonna buy five thousand decatherm's, well, that's, they're gonna break it out and bill us that over twelve months. Well, if we don't use five thousand decatherm's, then they'll, they'll buy it back and, and resell it. But, there's a penalty on some of that too. And so, when you, that's kind of what they call hedging or whatnot. And so, in the past, we've, we've done that. And that's, that's how you can save a substantial amount of money, especially in your winter months. Because you lock in your price and, and then they have their markup, that point three three five per decotherm. So, but...
Or if we go way over, it's a rough winter or something, we may end up costing...
Well, you, you can always buy more. So, if you, you know...
The price is higher.
Yes. Right. But, when you lock it in, so say, I think what we've done in the past, you lock it in. You, you take what your usage is. You, you take eighty percent of it. You buy that. If you buy more, yeah, you pay a little higher price, but you're still getting your savings on, on, on the eighty percent. So, if we've got a little bit of time, I'd like to look at this just a little bit before we, because that's, I mean, that's a substantial amount, the difference between the blue and the purple. And so, um, just to get a little better, uh, feel for that, especially with only one bid.
Kind of comparing that, if it is five thousand, I know you're just picking it up out of the air. But, if we do eighty percent, see what it is. If we go to the full percent, how much we would save? With the purple versus the blue, or if we go way over or way under. So...
I'll try.
I mean, keep it simple enough to be crazy. I've just, that's what I'm trying to get my hands around too, which is gonna be the better shot here. Yeah. Chris understood it a hell of a lot more the first time. I'm starting to get a hold of it now.
That's a little Greek.
We gotta do one.
So, if we can, if you can maybe get that done and then bring it back in a week or two and then we can make a decision on which way we're gonna go.
Yeah. And I guess the only thing, I would just look at the NYMEX and the Panhandle Eastern because those are gonna change. You know what I mean? So, I'll try to put something together. I'll bring it back.
Well, maybe you can look at that too, because I know the NYMEX is kind of the, what a lot of them use. And I don't know if Panhandle Eastern, if, if theirs is different.
I'd just pick one and use it for examples.
Well, but in the, in the past, we've always done NYMEX. But, I mean, this other one is a Panhandle Eastern index. That could be a whole lot different than the NYMEX, which is more of a average probably over the whole country, I would imagine.
I'll say I'll do what I can. I'll let you know.
We're passing the buck.
Okay. Twenty fifteen dash thirty, lean and title search services.
Same story. I was expecting at least three. Called them, talked to them. They'd spoken with Kara. So, the day comes and we have one. I don't know. I included the two thousand and eleven pricing also. You can see that initially, the last term or whatever, it was ordered to Midwest Title and Escrow. That's who responded this time. And they did go up by twenty-five dollars for the cost per record. And previously, whereas they charged nothing for updated records, they're now charging a hundred and fifty dollars. It is what it is.
What do we use it for?
Uh, Larry Vincent uses them for the properties.
So, it's just the properties that are going to sale on the courthouse steps?
But, usually he has to search more because some of them fall off like a few days before. So, there's usually quite a large list of properties that he has to actually search on. But, if they come in and pay those last couple of days, they fall off the sale.
So, this attaches to the sale?
Right. They have to pay for it.
Passing it along.
I'm just sitting here going, "Why do we gotta pay for that?"
So, I move we...
They pay it upfront and then when the actual sale happens, they get charged.
So, I move that we award the lean search and title search to Midwest Title and Escrow.
I'll second. Isn't that on record at the recorder's office though? The lean?
Well, it's just like when you first send it from, if you want to go in...
I know, but if we go to, across the street here to the title place, don't they come back across the street to the recorder's office? So, why don't we just go to the recorder's office? Recorder's office charges a fee of a hundred dollars.
Because we're not in the business of doing title searches? Because we're not in the business of doing title searches?
So, we'll pay somebody else to do them, to come over here and ask us to do it for them?
I, I get what you're, what you're after. I mean, but I, I would assume that there'd be some liability with us doing that as well. So...
Title companies aren't gonna... Larry, Ralph, Ralph would do it. Larry's office goes across the street or to whichever title company, which comes back to us. So, that's what I'm not understanding. I mean, that's where title companies, they come to you, right? You say, "If there's a lean attached to it..."
The recorder's office is, is by statute, recorder's office cannot do that search for the public. I don't know. I'd have to look at the statute and bust through to see if they're collecting. If, if the recorder's office can assist in collecting, I don't know.
I'd be interested to find out.
It's not permitted to assist or try to, 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 they, they're, it's intended that they hire the, the title companies.
We're not necessarily helping the private sector. We're just trying to get rid of the private, or the property. We gotta make sure that when we're selling it on the courthouse steps, we got all the information, which we have right next door, but we're gonna pay somebody else to come and get it.
I think Jeff, though, they do a little more than that also. I think they research open court cases and make sure that there's nothing that actually has to file an actual, I mean, I think there's a few more steps involved than...
They're gonna be on the records.
Right.
Yeah. We better, we better be all...
They also carry insurance in case they make errors too, right?
Yeah. How many times do they get sued for that?
Well, probably not, but...
They don't. You don't, you don't find stuff. If you have a mechanic's thing, you don't necessarily find it on them either. So, there's none of them gonna be perfect. You got insurance to have it. All right, let's move on.
Okay. We have, we have a second. All, all in favor?
Aye.
Unfinished business, website?
Being difficult, aren't you?
Website discussion.
So we were all there for their demo the other day. I guess I'm just looking for a direction. I forwarded to you their responses to the few questions we did have. The Civic Ready suite was brought up. Just to be clear, everything that was demoed was included in the base package that we reported, that would be something separate. And we're trying to set something up for sort of the, the parties that would be interested to, to view that. They did outline their fees for online transactions, so if, you know, if there's any questions or concerns about that. And the last two questions were kind of from Eric and I. We demoed separately what they offer for purchasing, which again, is included in the, in the pricing that they originally submitted. So just kind of looking for a direction to go at this point.
So when you say online fees, is that a fee for paying by credit card or whatever? So and we have to use their, their system?
It sounded like it was a second party that they used.
Yeah, it sounded like, it doesn't sound like it's, it's a pass through cost to somebody else who actually does the processing, it sounds like.
Because I know a lot of times it's two and a half percent is usually just a flat.
They did, yeah, okay. So they say current because they are negotiating lower rates, which should be in place in approximately sixty days, whatever that means. But they are working on, on lowering those a bit, it sounds like.
So I'll give you my two cents. Overall, I thought it was, it was a great site. It was very user friendly. I know Larry, Ben's had some great comments on it. I think it would be very beneficial to county residents to have a place to go and, and find stuff out. I think it, it helps us to, as the county as a whole, to put out some of the services that we offer and some of the things that we do. And then also, I, I think it helps all of our offices be more unified in having one provider and one site. So, I mean, as far as we, where we go from here, I, I'd like to see us move forward in, in contracting with Civic Ready to build us a site, so.
Yeah, I would too. I think that was, that was really, that was really very impressive.
This year or next year's budget, where are we looking at?
Well?
Well, the, I talked to them and they said it developed, the time is four to six months. So even if we started today, it would probably be the end of the year before, I mean, you're talking about first of the year to roll it out, so.
They're going to want money before they go it out, don't they?
Oh, yeah, I'm sure they will.
We're going to take it out of.
But this is the only, I won't say the only thing, but one of the few things that I think every department was here and nobody had a bad thing to say. So it seems to me that.
I don't disagree with that. There's a lot of good stuff, but we got to pay for it, so.
Well, yeah, I, I mean, I can't answer to the money part of it, but they, they kind of split it, I mean, they did offer the four year pay it off thing too, so.
I don't know if we can do that. Can we do that, Kristen? Can, are we allowed to split the cost of the website over four years? I don't know.
If you put in the language that it's subject annual appropriation, I guess you would.
And they agree to it? We're just not going to pay you after year one, but thanks.
They would have to.
We can, we can look into that. Is that something you guys would want to look into further? The upfront again was thirty-nine thousand and then the annual fees are five thousand eight hundred fifty.
I'd prefer just to bite the bullet and if we've got the money, but next year.
That's where I'm at too.
That's not, it's not.
So my next question, they had also kind of talked about the mobile app, which was five thousand dollars and then fifteen hundred a year. Remember the site's mobile app, or mobile friendly, I think they called it. So you're talking about a separate app, right? Wanted your thoughts on, on that, if you wanted to go that route or maybe not?
I mean, I, I like the app. I think that's the wave of the future. I think everybody's, you know, if you have access to the Cole County site at, you know, a fingers touch, I mean, that's, that's pretty important, I think, especially when emergencies happen or you just want to be updated. So it's a small cost. I'd like to see us move forward right away so that we could have something done by the first of the year or very soon thereafter, so. I know it's kind of an unexpected. Yeah, I know it's kind of an unexpected cost, but I think.
Some of that's going to come through the IT billing and go to each department too, right? I think the sheriff volunteered Public Works to pay for it. I, I mean, I don't mind going forward with it if we got the.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I thought Larry said.
He mentioned, he mentioned that to you. I think he's on vacation this week.
I think you just need to decide how you want to structure it. If you want to push a portion of the cost out to some of the departments, I know some of them currently pay someone to work on their website, so whether they would be putting part of that cost towards this to one unified side or not. You need to decide how you, and then the annual maintenance, if you're going to push that out also.
I just feel like as the county as a whole, we need to do this on one unified front. And so if other elected officials and we can take some money out of some other funds to take the upfront cost and get it paid, I'm good with that. But I think, I think we, we pay for this out of general revenue or whatever and we just, we just bite the bullet and we get it done.
Who else has their own site already that's paying for it?
Well, the clerk has their own site, don't you? Kind of a separate site? I thought you did. Is it?
Larry, yeah, Larry Vincent does. He's, but I don't know where the, where he pays it or anyway. And Jennifer, even Jennifer's purchasing site, so it's, it's hosted several.
I want to say that's like eighty-five bucks a year or something, super cheap.
You're going to have to keep that domain, no?
Yours is out on site, I don't know who's hosting it right now, but the sheriff, the sheriffs is on.
So then if we do this, then their site is going to be on our site? What if they want to keep doing their own site? Then we're not going to be able to tell them they can't.
We're in support of the.
Maybe we just have an agreement with all, with all departments or all office holders that say we all want to do this together, we're willing to participate.
I mean, the, I, I think ultimately every department's still going to be responsible for their own content, but the look and feel should be consistent amongst all the departments. I think they're certainly going to be controlling what goes on there, the particular part of it. They're kind of responsible for what goes there.
Yeah, we need to get to get with the different departments and see what their vision is from the website.
Different departments or different elected officials? I'm not worried about departments, we got a little bit of. The elected officials.
Somebody should be migrating to the new system, because I know like, I know the Pringer Center, they were wanting some changes. I know Public Works.
I'm not worried about them. They play, they play nice in the sandbox, there's some other ones that don't, are they going to raise the stakes?
The line is kind of the odd one as the courts. I don't know really where, I mean, do they belong to us or they belong to the state? You know, I don't, if we.
We can do a link to them if we want to do that.
I don't think they'd have a problem with us kind of working with them either, because they're always sending me things to update, so.
They're not the elected officials I'm talking about that can be a pain sometimes. I don't know why anybody would want to be difficult about this, I thought it was a good.
Let me chime in from the, from the recorder's. I don't know who pays for the recorder's website now, but I hope nobody, it's, it's very outdated.
Would you like to pay for yours?
It, it needs to be upgraded and updated. I would, I like the idea of the county's website and being a part of that. As far as the cost, I mean, I did, if you start, if the recorder's office has to be created annually for it, then why don't you just take the money out of the pocket instead of, I would go, if you have to, if you want to charge me every year, aren't you going to have to allocate?
Some elected officials and departments have their own funding, so that's why we do split that cost up on them. Other departments don't have slush funds, so.
The technology thing, so the recorder's office has the technology thing. And that could be applicable. My concern there is if, see right now, you're bringing all, everyone in together under one umbrella, if you start charging each one, will they perhaps leak the umbrella if they're paying for it anyway?
That's where I was going with that, Ralph. Not anybody that's sitting in this room right now is going to be who I'm necessarily talking about. Well, except for you now, you sound like you're going to rebellion stage. These teenagers, we can't get it real then.
The presentation I saw, it looked great and wonderful, and I would look forward to taking, I hope you do it, I hope you can do it quickly and the recorder's website's updated and we'll be happy to tell us, tell me what you need.
I think maybe we just ought to move ahead with it.
So I'm going to go ahead and move forward.
And we'll just.
Fair enough direction for today?
Yep.
And then if we need to have a sit down with everybody and get them on the same page, we can have a meeting.
You okay with that, Jeff?
Just talking about that.
You okay with moving it forward?
Yeah. We didn't say we had to pay for it tomorrow or December twelfth or whenever, so we'll find out what the.
You guys have to say probably just get the options from their end on how we can structure the payments out and see what, what falls into what we can do or not.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. New business, second and final reading of budget adjustment number eight.
Grab Debbie.
Debbie. What's her number? Nine one six oh? Nope, that's Sheriff.
Nine one one.
Nine one one? Is your number nine one one?
Yeah.
I called and you didn't answer.
Okay, this is second and final reading for six thousand nine hundred twenty-five dollars eighty-six cents for the sales tax. So it's your circuit on that contract, I'm actually probably going to sign this one on the TV, that bid.
Oh.
This is half, but the P A's paying the other half.
I may we approve the court order for six thousand nine hundred and twenty-six dollars and eighty-six cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Eric, subdivision street acceptance.
I got several here. The first one, Thayer Road, that was done about a year and a half ago, two years ago. That's the more recent one. The others, cleaning out my files and found some that hadn't, the final acceptance had not been processed. And so that's the reason why we have so many. If you have any specific questions about any, I'd be happy to entertain those. Just to give you, Thayer Road, like I said, that's the most recent. That is the first of these subdivisions that were going through a more extensive review of the stormwater, erosion control, sediment control type of things. And they did a lot of what I would say extra stuff compared to what we're normally used to see. And I talked to Chris about it yesterday, the stormwater in particular. The rest of these, like I said, are more established, have been there for a few years. But like I said, today or now, we're reviewing stormwater, the different things that the contractor, the developer has to do to, you know, retain sediment and things like that, keep it on their, their property and not leaving Washington down, downstream and affecting somebody downstream. And so like I said, Thayer Road, that's the, the more recent and was done. I'd say they went above and beyond what would have normally been required and it's turned out good. We've had a few questions from property owners out there abutting the subdivision, but we've reviewed those and checked and there's really no issue to, to speak of out there, so we've handled everything. So I'd recommend approval of these subdivision acceptance court orders.
Have you heard anything from them out there, the Lacy's subdivision lately? I have not.
No, I talked to the one person at the beginning of the year and it was more a concern of a home builder placing fill in a drainage way. We went out and looked at it and the area that they were doing, they hadn't finished, they just kind of pushed the material they were supposed to regrade.
That's fine. With all the rain we've had, I've been pleasantly surprised. I have not had a phone call, I was really expecting one, so it sounds like they, they have gone above and beyond, but we're still getting some issues with it, so.
It was Bill Wright and like, so we, we've watched it all the way through and I don't really have any concerns out there. Did an extensive review after the fact and still don't have any concerns.
Um, just a couple of questions. Merryweather Road out there off Notches Trace, where is that at actually?
If you look at.
Well, I know where Notches Trace is, I just, I'm not sure where Merryweather is.
It's up at the, it's the very back top of the hill, it's a little cul-de-sac road. It was built in phases.
Is that the, up at the very end of it?
Did you open up your attachment? Page down with that page three.
Oh, did, did he have it on there?
Yeah, I didn't see those either, and then I saw his copy of the page down, so.
Is that road going to go through at some point?
No, they originally, their preliminary plat, the first one, had that going and connecting to this Loseret, but then they did a replat or revised and submitted a different one to show a cul-de-sac and then another cul-de-sac on the other one.
Yeah, so that. Yeah, that other road has been extended up the hill right there, but those, those two roads aren't going to connect.
Partially, it's not actually completed. So we haven't actually, we haven't accepted that.
Okay.
Partial, partially built road yet. Because it doesn't have turnaround.
Yeah, we don't have turnaround, so we haven't accepted any of the, the under interim.
And then out at Lakewood. Just that end section of Lakewood Drive and then that Tucker Court is that newest part that Gary's done down there, into that cul-de-sac.
Just the cul-de-sac side now.
Right. The other side that he hasn't developed yet.
He's got part of that road built on that, those, those first lots there, but we don't, the way we do it, we do it from intersection to intersection, so we haven't actually done a little piece there, a short sixty foot piece or whatever.
Okay, I may we accept the roads as submitted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All three of you get it to the last.
Everybody says.
About budget discussion on boom mower for Public Works.
I even took care of saying the other one on paper.
I don't like paper. What is wrong with you?
Well, he likes paper.
Frank Sam a copy and then attach mine to it.
I will, I can do some.
You got a whole lot more to sign there, but.
Have you looked, we've actually got a boom mower on here that we're looking at purchasing this year. We're a little short in our actual budget part because we're going to actually sell the tractor that we're using now, which should bring about fifteen or twenty thousand. So what we wanted to do is move about sixty-five hundred dollars out of contingency into our budget to pay for it until we sell the other tractor. And that's pretty much all it was, is the, just a discussion on that. And if that was agreeable with you, Debbie said it would be fine or it looked like it would work out with hers, so.
So once you sell the boom, the old one, then that money will go back into account and then you can go back, put it back into contingency?
Yes.
So you're actually saving us money because we're going to get more money for the.
Yes, we should come in, yeah.
We're going to use Tri-Purple Wave this time. I think we can get a lot more of what we've got when we've traded them in. So we're going to give that a shot and we've been working with them, trying to get something going.
He's only going to get, what, six grand, I think, Larry?
We had, I think we had figured eight in our.
We got eight in our budget.
Eight in the budget and then they were only offering us six, and so if you go Purple Wave, even if you get eighty-one hundred, we're still going to be money there.
Well, we're actually buying, purchasing both, the mower and the others, both coming off, uh, motor.
By doing it this way, we can keep this mower, our mower we have right now in service until we get the new one here. And then we can take the equipment off of it, sell the tractor and the mower separately. So we're just trying to keep that mower running so we don't get behind, you know, the other possibility, we'd have to sell the tractor first and then we wouldn't have to be here. But with the way the grass is growing this year, we'd like to keep that mower in service.
So will we have to actually do the budget transfer? I mean, have you spent all this other money already or?
That's all allocated out, yes. We probably will have to do that, move it out of contingency there in order to pay That's all allocated out, yes, we probably will have to do that, move it out of contingency there, in order to pay for the boom mower and the tractor. But that money will come back after we sell the other one, so. Probably what we'll do is put the exact same amount back into contingency, and then hopefully, what was left of the tractor, we can use to put a couple of new dump beds on a couple of dump trucks that need it. But we have to get to that bridge.
We just want, we do wanna hit you sideways, we wanted to bring you up to date.
Yeah, I think y'all get told quite often, we don't like surprises, so.
Yeah, that's why we're here. We just didn't want, when you seen the budget or adjustment, when it comes through, you at least know ahead of time and not try and explain it to you, then we wanted to move forward on this.
I'm good, let's do it.
Alrighty, I'm fine with it too, thank you guys for keeping us.
Thank you.
Rest of it. What, John?
So we still in new business?
We're almost adjourned.
Yeah, we're, do we have anything else?
Well. Hey. So your generator's on the fritz, so what are we doing about that?
What happened, Mozzie? I read the email, it, it overspeed, so now it won't start, because there's some kind of an antenna on it set up to where it won't start, so it won't, it won't hurt the motor. Greg Camp has gotten old phobic, they will be here this afternoon to take a look at it, get it operational. After it's operational, we need to look at doing something for maintenance on it. Like I was telling you, it hasn't been load tested, we need to load test it very well, that could have been something that was found out, that there was an issue, if we load tested it, it might have told us that there was an issue with it before. And just general things like oil changes and going through the different sensors, it's, I mean, it's a six hundred, I can't remember what it is now, six hundred and fifty KW, so it's a huge generator. And we just need to make sure it's about, I wanna say, and I'm guessing this, but I figured two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars to replace it. So we need to make sure that that's, we keep it operational and working to the best they can.
So how often does that actually kick on to, every week?
That's what ours does too. Yeah, it runs every week for, I think, two hours.
Yeah, we, we actually have a contract on that big one we have out there, where they come in once a year and, and service it and load test it, just to.
Who do you got?
Uh, it's out of Columbia.
Cummins?
Uh, yes.
Cummins?
We use the Cummins out there, out of Columbia, they come, they're actually set up to come, every, oh, I can't remember how. It's about, yeah, powers, yeah. They come like four times a year and actually check the generator, after you some service on it, that it might need, actually do a full load going, make sure the extra generator itself is actually functioning in the way it's supposed to.
Yeah, they were down a couple of weeks ago and changing it a little more. Lieutenant Pittman's actually getting some figures together, and he was gonna talk to the sheriff and I about it, and we were gonna approach you guys with it, whenever we get an idea on, on a direction you guys wanna go, and then I figured we'd turn it over to Jennifer, our, jump on their contract, and then they could pay it out of there.
Boy, I'll tell you what, they picking on Public Works today.
You know, speaking of that too, we've never had a contract on the health department area that I know of. They may have, but when they put that into three years, that was one year maintenance period, that's it.
Okay, we're taking nine one one out of, out of the sheriff, so I guess we could take some out of the Public Works.
I know where you're at. We need to slow down, what are you thinking about?
Don't say that.
So, I mean, I think it's, I think it's great that we have these backup generators, I mean, but, you know, as, as we go forward, you know, I mean, if we have a major catastrophe, I'm not sure that we need to have a physical generator everywhere, or you know, I mean, we got a lot of portable generators that Bill has. You know, I mean, what is really essential, I mean, you know, what do you guys have that's really essential that you have to have power? The gas?
It was during the ice storm.
You have to have pumps for the gas?
We gotta have pumps to be able to work on our equipment.
Now Gerald's gotta have, I mean, you've got to.
Our jail is one big computer, so it needs, and then all the security electronics as well, but we gotta have.
Well, I mean, you know, we all will make do if something drastically happens, but I mean, if we have to have gas, I mean, you know, that's, that's an essential, you know? But I mean, I think sometimes we just think that everybody needs a generator, and you know, I mean, even generators are gonna fail, even your generator could fail, and, you know, and you know, or a tree falls on it, or, or somebody hits it, or whatever, and so, you know, there, there has to be that, maybe that second or third plan of pulling a generator in and being able to plug it in and then powering some stuff up, so.
The way our stuff's wired now, we could do that, if something happened to our generator, we've got the, the switches there that were, you know, it's ours is three-phase, so if we have to, you know, we can probably sideline, you know, just use one phase and bring a smaller generator.
We did have, well, originally before, like, when we were actually losing the, the fuel master system, so like, it was pretty easy to tie it all together, but now you can't just actually plug in just the pumps, because the pumps are hooked to the computer that's in the other room, and that's good tied into the network thing, it goes across into the network, so like, all of that's not powered at the same time. The pumps won't work either, you can go to manual override on them and hopefully keep up with what's going on with it, but face it, ever since we went to computers, everything is tied together, that, that one part of that building's not working, the rest of the building is, you're just the, the society of illusion, I guess.
Right, well, I mean, that, you know, that all comes into, you know, getting all these generators, and I know the RPC did a great job of getting these generators, and, and they're all over the place for different regions, so when a disaster hits, hopefully it's not gonna happen, you know, over the whole state, but you know, I mean, with, with, with all these computers are great, but when we need essential things, we need to be able to power things up, and I know that, Bill, you're working on a lot of these water towers and stuff, being able to, to pull up and plug in and run the pumps so that people have water. I mean, that's an essential service, and so, you know, we, I think we just need to really think about what is essential, and you know, I mean, if, if you had to hook up gas pumps, I guarantee you can figure something out. Or you, or they, or they could be, or they could be gravity, cause you got them elevated, right?
Yeah, they have to go to an actual pump. They, they actually, at the actual, at the tank themselves, they, for safety reasons, they, when that pump shuts off, that line shuts off at the tank there, that's all automatic, that's all. Each thing opens and closes on each one of them for safety reasons, that you can't have the fuels killed or stuff.
You country boys out there can figure something out if the power went out. That's what I'm talking about. So, anyway, but, so you're gonna have it checked out, and then you'll give us an update.
We should have, we should have some kind of a, an idea of what's going on with it, disasters.
I think Greg said phobic was, he'd already called phobic.
Yeah, Greg said he, he'd already.
I should have sent down the guy from Columbia.
And then if you're wanting, we talked about this before the meeting, but if, if you're wanting us to look at the Cole County Jail, to try to come up with some essentials to be able to hook up, we'd have to get a consulting, somebody to consult with it, cause it's yeah, it's, it's gonna be a big, it'd be a big deal to do that.
You have a generator there, not a generator?
That's what.
Oh, it's down?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm betting it's a sensor or something, it went high speed.
I would think so, I hope so.
Well, I mean, I would just think that, you know, we have all these emergency plans, and we have all these things, and you, you can't prepare for everything, I mean, there's, there's just no way, but I mean, you know, if, if that generator does go down when we need it, I mean, that is a problem. So, you know, I mean, and then, then it becomes, how do we power it with some portable generators or whatnot, I mean?
The guys that's from, that we have, that's coming from Cummings now, that have actually come out and do their now, well, it's time to be calling the two R C sitting there. They've been very.
Responsible.
Very responsive, but very knowledgeable about what's going on.
The state uses them, so there may be a state contract out there.
I believe there is.
And then.
That's who, our staff, that's where I get my money, public jail lines, they pay for that a lot, so if that's coming up again.
Well, you are all essential, so we can't, we can't, we can't have you down.
I'll have, I'll have Lieutenant Pittman check on that state contract too, to see if, so that we may not fit it out. At least get us operational, and then, once we get operational, then, then start the process of the load checks, and making sure that oil's being changed and all that stuff.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else, Mike? Bill, Tammy?
Thank you all for supporting the nine one one, dude, I think it's very important for the community, we've had several meetings with them, with all the emergency services, so that's something pretty important.
Anything else? Will we recess until four thirty?
I'm moved.
Sorry, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen, ladies.
Where you wanna go? We'll go ahead and go there, and I'll be there, you can trust me, I'm.